Great. Yeah, just let me know when Supervisor Davy gets home. Perfect. What's that?
I thought it was six thirty.
Uh, not on my watch. It was a big help, but it couldn't work.
We probably should have done something like.
Yeah, there's still, there's still time. Hey, Simon. Same.
I feel like I'm lost.
Yeah, I, I like to.
I feel like I look like I can, I don't know. When I go back and watch the city.
Bear with us, guys, we're just waiting for one more.
Wait another minute anyway.
Yep. We'll give, we'll give him another minute. Maybe he texted? Did he text you at all, do you know? Hmm? Yeah. Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Great. About to. Okay, I have six thirty. Uh, let's get this meeting started, please do we for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Quiet of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, in the physical, for the very interest of our.
We have a recording device up front for the purposes of taking minutes. We're also streaming and archiving the video on YouTube. Prior to the session, we had an executive session where we talked about legal and personnel matters. And we can move on to the approval of. Excuse me? The, the one previous, the executive session to talk about personnel. I don't remember the date of that. Uh, there was an executive session held, uh, middle of last week. October seventh. Also to discuss, uh, personnel matters, thank you. Moving on to approval minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on September ninth, two thousand twenty five.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Darren Essien and seconded by Supervisor Iakono. All is in favor? Aye. Motion carries on to the Treasury report, Mr. Bars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hopefully, hopefully you've had an opportunity to take a look at my report. I think there's a lot of good news included therein. Cash balances as of September thirtieth, twenty five is up, uh, over six hundred eighty three thousand from September, uh, thirtieth, twenty four. We currently are, uh, in all of our different funds, uh, have total cash of six million, two hundred twenty thousand, one hundred eighty four dollars and ninety two cents. One year ago, uh, the total cash in all the funds in the township amounted to five million, five hundred thirty six thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and thirty six cents in our general fund, which is our operating account, used, uh, uh, within the township. Uh, our adjusted net income is a small loss of sixty one thousand. At this time, we had budgeted a six hundred and seventy five thousand dollar loss, so we're actually, uh, showing a six hundred and, uh, fourteen thousand dollar positive variance, uh, there. The, uh, we, we, uh, we were at a six hundred eighty six thousand dollar positive variance in, in August, so we're maintaining that, uh, pretty strongly. A couple of the, uh, the, uh, highlights, uh, of the variances that make up, the general fund, uh, positive, positive variance, our real estate taxes are, um, over budgeted by forty four thousand, four hundred thirty nine dollars and ninety nine cents. Uh, in July, that number, the positive variance was forty five, in August, it was forty three thousand, so we're holding that. So the re- real estate tax collections, uh, remain strong, our real estate transfer tax, uh, is over budgeted by a hundred, a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and six dollars and eighteen cents, which is really reflective of the strong market value here, the, and the township. That variance, um, was eighty six thousand in July and eighty one in August, so that's just continuing to grow, which is really, really super. Uh, real quick in the liquid fuels tax. We're showing a, a, a two hundred forty five thousand dollar budget variance specifically because of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars that we had budgeted for road programs that hasn't, um, hasn't yet begun. Uh, and then jumping into the trash fund. Uh, our, our net income for the nine months was three hundred ninety thousand, we budgeted, uh, three hundred sixty thousand, so we're thirty dollars over budget. And that's a fund we always have to keep our eye on because of, um, the collections that don't start for two months in the, into the next year. Uh, in July, that variance was, um, a hundred and four thousand, twenty six thousand in August, so I think we're holding steady there, so I think we're in good shape. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bars, any questions for Peter from the board? Thank you, okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Treasury report, pay all bills and release relevant escrows.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Darren Essien, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries on to the finance report, the first item we have, I'd like to make a motion for the authorization to advertise a special meeting for the presentation of the two thousand twenty six preliminary budget scheduled for Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty five at six thirty P M.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iakono, discussions from the board? All is in favor?
I, no, I, I have a point, I would think that this board, it should be incumbent on this board to have a preliminary budget meeting prior to the municipal election. Um, I know that the county has decided to hold off on their budgeting discussions until after the general election, not surprising. Um, I think that in the interest of transparency and full disclosures, I think this board should not take that tack and should schedule the preliminary budget meeting and have discussions about potential financial impacts on the upcoming calendar year for the township residents before the upcoming general election.
Yeah, thank you for the comment, uh, we're being consistent with what we've done in years past. The budget is in every supervisor's hands for review now, all that has to be collected by the treasurer, then that has to be collated. I will have a final discussion and I have to prepare the presentation for, uh, the budget, so that time is kind of necessary for everybody to have their input.
Well, I, I mean, I, I hear you, but I mean, I'm looking at the preliminary budget as a, you know, shows a one point three million dollar deficit, and I don't know how this board's planning on making that up. And if it involves a, a tax hike, um, I think this board should have that conversation for the residents before they go to the polls. I think it's cowardly not to, but that's my thoughts.
Okay.
We'll bury it behind their want of transparency.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you, motion carries on to taxes. During the month of September, there were thirteen invoices collected for two thousand twenty five taxes, the total tax collected for September was eleven thousand, four hundred thirty seven dollars and forty four cents, and was remitted to the township in one installment, as of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, three thousand, four hundred and forty five tax bills were collected at three thousand, five hundred and seventy seven, uh, or ninety six point three one percent collected so far. And that concludes the tax report, I don't know if Mr. Plash is here? Okay, that concludes the tax report, thank you, on to public safety.
Good evening, Chief.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for nothing.
During the month of September, two thousand twenty five, the police department had eight hundred and forty calls for service, there had broken down into medical emergencies, fifty seven, two DUI or W S arrests, one robbery. We had nineteen alarms, uh, seventy four traffic stops, uh, which resulted in forty nine citations. There were seven domestic disturbances, eleven crashes, two thefts, five other criminal investigations, four hundred and seventy four, uh, building and development checks, eight vacation homes were checked, um, fifteen suspicious vehicles and persons, we had one suicide and, uh, one municipal ordinance violation and a hundred and thirty three, uh, miscellaneous calls. Uh, I wanted to call attention to, I know, I talked about this briefly, uh, last month, but I just want to remind everyone that Pennsylvania's new cellphone, uh, law took effect on June fifth of two thousand twenty five, making it a primary violation for the use of any handheld device while driving or while stopped at a red light. Warnings have to be issued for the first, um, twelve month period, and after that, it's a fifty dollar fine plus costs. Um, again, I would ask you, you know, be situationally aware, be aware of what's going on around you, if you see something, call nine one one and report it. And stay safe.
I have a question about nine one one.
Yes.
So I had a, uh, an incident the other day where there was a dog that was loose, no collar, running around, uh, near my neighborhood. Call nine one one when that happens?
Yes, yes, um, in Delaware County, as with, as with a lot of other counties, the nine one one system is not exclusively for emergencies, it is for any type of police response or any other type of response that you may need from any type of emergency services, whether that's the police, the fire, or a, a, a medical emergency, the ambulance. Um, the majority of departments in Delaware County, with the exception of some of the larger ones, do not have their own dispatchers. So, um, if you would need police services, you, you must call nine one one, or else there's no way that you're ever going to be able to reach a police officer, or a police officer is going to know that you need some type of assistance, so yes, please call nine one one.
Thank you. Um, so moving on, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the acquisition of a new two thousand twenty five Chevy Tahoe for the police department pursuant to the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program, and the outfit in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, subject to the solicitor's review. And Chief, I was hoping you could give some information about, um, where we stand with the police parts right now.
I, I can, the, um, the bottom line unfortunately is that the fleet is getting older. Uh, we have a total of four vehicles that are, um, over seventy thousand miles, two of them, um, two of them have seventy three thousand, uh, I'm sorry, one has seventy three thousand, one has seventy eight thousand, and then we have another police vehicle that has eighty six thousand and another that has ninety two thousand miles on it. Um, in addition to the mileage, I think we actually spoke last month about engine hours. Um, some of these vehicles have a, a very high, the, uh, the vehicle with seventy eight thousand, uh, miles on it has nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty nine engine hours on it. The one with, um, ninety two thousand has nine, nine thousand, one hundred and nine miles on it. And these vehicles, when I, um, these vehicles, one of them is a two thousand eighteen, one of them is a two thousand nineteen, and two of them are two thousand twenty vehicles. So we are, um, you know, we, we are getting good use out of our vehicles. The majority of departments, um, around us usually keep them for about three years, maximum of four years, maximum of about seventy or seventy five thousand miles. We, we have been, knock on wood, we, we, we get good luck out of our vehicles with the assistance of our road department. They're, uh, in regular for oil changes and brake changes and, you know, we upkeep them very well and we, and I, and I think it shows, but unfortunately, there is a, a turnover to the vehicles, it's sadly enough, um, if you will, a cost of doing business. Um, not a favorable cost, I understand, but it is, uh, a necessity.
And, um, the, we're going to replace, obviously, one of those vehicles, we'll be, you know, trading in, but selling the other one on municipal, is that the intent?
Yes, 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 we are going to get rid of one of them, yes, definitely.
It, I'm a little confused, the, the, the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty model, we bought a police car in the last five years, haven't we?
We, we have, we have bought, uh, two police cars in the past five years.
So there's a twenty three and a twenty four out there?
Uh, there's actually two twenty fours, yes.
And what are the mileages on those?
Uh, the mileage on the one twenty twenty four is thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety five, and on the other, uh, twenty four, which is relatively brand new, has three thousand, four hundred and fifty nine miles on it.
Okay, I mean, I, obviously, we're not running full shifts like we should be, because it's sort of reflected in the budget. I mean, it, the cost of parts these days with the current tariffs from overseas make these purchases even more expensive than normal, and we didn't budget for a car this year. Uh, and I also noticed in the preliminary budget that was sent around, there's eighty five thousand dollars, it looks like it's budgeted for next year. So, I mean, if we have two vehicles that are under fifteen thousand and a vehicle that's at least at seventy three, I don't know that we need to spend that money, especially the unbudgeted money this year to buy a car. My personal feeling.
Yeah, I definitely would say if, if we go forward with a purchase this year, then it would not be a, a, a budget item, um, in two thousand twenty six. Um, is, is this, this is scheduled to be a marked vehicle as well?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I think we had some discussions about value in both, but the visibility for the, for the officers to the public is, is important. And then I guess the question is the outfit also Co-Stars eligible?
Yes.
Who does it is? Is there any other, uh, questions or comments from the board?
Bravo to the maintenance and, uh, Keith, Keith can review the drawing.
Name and address, please.
Yeah.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you give me your name and address?
Uh, Ron Berniac, or Chief Borby, name and screen.
Thank you. Um, I believe there's a motion made.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor Iakono. Uh, no further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty five dash thirty, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from account four ten dot one thirty payroll police officers to account four ten dot five hundred P D vehicles and capital expenses.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Darren Essien and seconded by Supervisor Iakono, any discussion from the board? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Uh, before we move on, I have another question involving police. I saw on Facebook over the weekend that, do we have two officers at the Chester Heights Community Day?
We did, sir.
Yes.
Well, question one is were they being paid to be there?
Yes, they were.
Question two is why? We don't have an intermunicipal agreement with Chester Heights, I hope this wasn't a detail rate.
It was, it was just a, uh, community service, we were in, asked if we would want, want to be there, uh, and it was just community service, public relations.
Were these two officers the ones that were on shift that day, or there were two other ones?
There were two other ones, sir.
So were they getting paid special detail rate?
I would have to.
Seems to me a waste of money, resources, and fuel. I mean, I, 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 I guess I understand from a high level perspective, but we don't perform any police services in Chester Heights. I, I, I don't, I'm scratching my head on that one, especially two cars. But, okay.
Okay, um.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good.
Appreciate it. On to Bethel Ho's company, number one.
Uh, yeah, I don't think Chief Peacock is here, but I think our Fire Marshal Betsmal is going to give the Ho's company a report.
Good evening, folks, good evening, board. Uh, we had a slow month for a change, we had thirty seven calls for service, which made my wife happy, was able to sleep through the night. We have a total of four hundred and seven for the year. We had eighteen in Bethel Township, five alarms, six EMS assist, three vehicle accidents, two brush fires, and two wire calls. We had nineteen mutual aid, we had three with Concordville. Excuse me, we had six with Tallyville. Had five with Upper Chi and five with Claymont, we had one drill for the month. And we're getting in the cold season, so I hope everybody had their heater serviced and their chimneys cleaned, so we don't have any issues, we don't want to come visit you this winter, except when we go around with Santa Claus, so hopefully everybody has their things, and they have their smoke detectors and C O detectors up to, power with batteries and if need be replacements, so. This time of year is big for C O. Make sure they're checked as well.
And you guys are also doing your holiday greenery drive, correct, where people can purchase wreaths and gardens and things?
Facebook, we have, um, the wreaths and that kind of stuff, if, if you go on, um, our webpage, they'll have a link there, you can order through that. We're also doing trunk retreat, which is, uh, Friday night, um, which park and rec, you can, the Fire Department, Police Department, they'll all there with, uh, trunk retreat over at Bethel Springs, and I think that starts at six. Right there, six o'clock.
Stealing the thunder for later.
Like to see everybody out in visiting, so.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. On to EMS.
All right, EMS, there were forty seven EMS calls for service this month, thirty six of them were A L S and eleven of them were B L S. And I'll just keep moving along, um, the emergency management report, there were no events of major injury or property damage reported. Um, our emergency management coordinators, uh, was at Parks and Rec movie night and has been following up and closing the incident on Goodley Road. And that concludes the emergency management report. I'll move on to facilities and maintenance, the highway report for September, grew service several police cars and completed repairs, service truck number five in completed repairs, assisted with paper shredding, uh, completed twenty one storm drain repairs, installed the new fountain in John Atkinson Park, repaired signs and chart well, cleared storm drains, cleaned up around Jack King, dragged the ball field at Community Park and cut and trimmed at all parks. The buildings and grounds, they cleaned up leaves around the office campus, repaired, uh, had the EMS garage door repaired, repaired the A C and the sewer authority and Highway Department office, cleaned around the shop and offices, and repaired the sensor for overhead lights in the garage. That concludes the facilities and maintenance reports.
Thank you, on to the board reports, first is Parks and Recreation. Uh, they held their, their October meeting last Wednesday, uh, which has passed the cutoff to get that information in the packet, so the October meeting minutes will be available in next month's, uh, Board of Supervisors packet. Uh, not, not a lot of updates, uh, again, as Brett indicated, preparing for their participation in the trunk retreat, um, and also planning for the Snacks with Santa event in December. Uh, in addition to the report, we have a couple items, the first item, uh, item A, under Parks and Recreation, uh, we're, we are, it's a moot point, this motion was actually made in December of two thousand twenty four to authorize payment for the signs. Um, so we're going to skip over that one and focus on item B, which is the resolution, uh.
No action, no action.
No action.
Thank you. Uh, there's a re- resolution for reallocating expenses, so there were a lot of expected and unexpected expenses this year for the Parks Department. Um, and in the last several months, there was, uh, the opportunity to do some pond treatment, the repl- removal of some trees, uh, along Goodley Road, uh, there was additional cost for fireworks next year due to tariffs. Um, and also cutting a check for the sign that we talked about, so uh, in an effort to try to make sure that we could fund all of that within the park budget and not go outside of the park budgets, we need to do a true up between some of the line items within the Parks and Rec budget. So, um, this is a resolution of Bethel Township, Delaware County, P A, amending the township's budget to transfer one thousand, seventy dollars from Parks and Recreation Events Egg Hunt to Parks and Recreation Park Development, transfer six thousand, eight hundred, ninety five dollars from Parks and Rec's Events Miscellaneous to Parks and Recreation Park Development, and transfer two thousand, seven hundred dollars from Parks and Recreation Events Miscellaneous to Parks and Recreation Events Fireworks. Essentially, we're trying to fund the fireworks for the additional unforeseen cost, and then moving some of the event money into development to pay for tree removals, pond treatment, pond pumps, things like that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution of two thousand twenty five dash thirty one, reallocating expenses within the Parks and Recreation budgetary category.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Darren Essien, any discussion from the board on this? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries on to zoning hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the board had, the zoning hearing board had one item on the agenda, application two thousand twenty five dash eleven for their September meeting, it was a request for a rear yard setback of sixteen feet in lieu of the required twenty five feet. This was denied, however, the board allowed the non-conforming part of an existing deck to be widened and for it to remain inside the building envelope as required. And at this time, there are no new applications before the board, and that was submitted by, uh, Chairman Gary Linehan, not sure, uh, anything to add?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the zoning report.
Thank you, on to the planning commission?
Planning commission did not have anything on their agenda this month.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
James McDaniel, fourteen, fifteen, is happy released. Did I hear that there's an upcoming deficit? Did I hear that right earlier tonight?
Yes, you did.
And how much was that?
Well, on the last paper that I've received, it's about one point three million.
Okay, all right. I'm not criticizing the volunteers for the park, uh, for the games and all that stuff. You're the guy in charge right now, I mentioned about the video? The video? You got a hundred and ten people, houses in this township that haven't paid your taxes. A hundred and ten, now they're, I think, they're in the penalty phase, okay? Do you know what that video cost the taxpayers? For fifty nine seconds, three hundred bucks, that's five dollars a second for a video that has eight likes. Waste of money to me. Eight likes, it cost taxpayers bit five dollars a second. Damn, that's five bucks, five hours. And only has eight likes? And only has eight likes? We'll go later on with the share of property. But there's a hundred and ten people, and I'm not speaking for them people, houses. I just hope those people in them houses get out and vote. A hundred and ten taxpayers, could be your neighbor, could be your parents, could be anybody. They're now in the penalty phase for not paying taxes. God bless them because the school taxes are next. They'll do now.
Thank you. Okay.
I think I was in the middle of the planning commission report. So there was no planning commission meeting this month, but I do believe there will be a meeting in November?
Yes, correct.
Anything else you want to add, Lou?
No, it's a, uh, it's for the council daycare center.
It's a final plan, right?
We reviewed a, uh, sketch plan for earlier. We are, we are now submitting preliminary plans. The township engineers in the process of reviewing the plan and comparing college for next month.
Sounds good. Thanks, Lou. That concludes planning commission report.
Thank you. Onto the sewer authority?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for this month's sewer report, um, the dedication work has been completed for phase six of Foxfield. Uh, dedication documents being finalized for Creekside Run. The developer is moving forward with dedication of sanitary sewer improvements and rights of way. In Belmont Three, the developer has been provided with the, uh, developer and security agreements and remain, and, uh, remain under review. For the engineers' report, pile road pump station upgrade, we have, they've run final design for the power pump station upgrade. Um, they are bidding this project in two phases. And for pump station generators, the sewer authority received a grant to install new or replace four generators, Green Glen, North Brooks, Scotts Glen, and Lumen Circle. Um, they are working on procuring the equipment via Co-Stars. And I think that pretty much concludes the report. Uh, Donna, do you, any, anything to add to that?
No. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. So I apologize.
Thank you. I think that concludes your place.
Thank you. Believe so, yes. Um, onto education.
Thank you. The, uh, Garden Valley School District, over the past two weeks, the central office team has conducted a time study at two secondary schools through fifty four random spot observations during the school day, uh, and were encouraged by the results. Um, and this has to do with, um, the review of the new district's smart screen initiative. Um, at the middle school, they saw not a single phone observed in classrooms and during class changes in the hallways. They only saw five students with their phones out during that time period. Uh, at the high school, only two phones were observed in classrooms during that same, uh, time period. Uh, so the school is making a concerted push to, um, filter out, um, the presence and use of cell phones during the school day. Um, and I think they're, from the results thus far, they're doing, um, a very good job of it. Not much else to talk about in terms of the school district. They did send home, uh, a family tech agreement that's along the same lines. Um, trying to educate, um, the kids about the, uh, safe and appropriate use of technology um, and internet content. Uh, for any of you who have kids in the district, um, either probably saw that come home, or if you didn't see it come home, you might want to ask about it because, uh, something the schools are encouraging parents to review with their kids and and sign. And that's all I have for, uh, school report.
Thank you. Onto library?
Uh, library, um, the library had their, uh, fifth annual fundraising dinner at the Crown Tavern, uh, last month. Uh, more than seventy five people attended, uh, which helps them, uh, raise their, um, their donations for a lot, to support library operations. Um, during Library Card Sign Up Month, which was also September, the library welcomed more than seventy five new library cardholders, uh, and a prize winner, uh, received a twenty five dollar gift certificate. Um, there's no upcoming events that I can see, um, on my report. Um, but if anybody's interested in upcoming events, uh, or activities in the library, please visit colibrary.org for all the current information. That's all I have.
Thank you. Onto the manager's report. Dr. Addison?
Good evening, everyone. As we close out September, our focus has been on preparing the twenty twenty six township budget to ensure responsible financial planning for the year ahead. This process includes the proper advertisement of the preliminary budget and planning for the final adoption in December with transparency and accountability at the forefront. As a reminder, the preliminary budget presentation is currently scheduled for Monday, November tenth, here at six thirty PM in the John Myers Building with the goal of adopting the twenty twenty six financial budget at the Tuesday, December ninth meeting. In addition to the budget, township staff and accounting department, um, have been working closely with our police department to address budgetary needs, ensuring the resources remain aligned to support public safety while balancing the overall township's priorities. Uh, the highway department has also been preparing for the upcoming twenty five, twenty six winter seasons. Crews, equipment, and materials are being readied, so we are well positioned to respond to other weather conditions we may face. At the same time, we are continuing to advance end of year projects before the inclement weather comes in. Uh, these combined efforts reflect our commitment to thoughtful planning, strong collaboration across departments, and maintaining efficient operations. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Onto old business. Uh, we have this discussion about the, uh, burn ordinance. Mr. Maher, would you mind?
Yeah, so, um, we, you know, we've been round and round with this thing for, uh, months now, and um, I initially put a draft together for you and sort of modeled some of our neighbors and was relatively lax and, um, you know, interacting with one of our residents who, um, you know, had looked at this, uh, more and more closely, made me dig more and more, and I think I, you know, sunk down a rabbit hole with it at the beginning of this month, and, um, I ended up in a place that's very restrictive. I think that the, uh, regulations, uh, under the Clean Air Act and the, um, Solid Waste Management Act and Act one oh one, which is, uh, you're, there's portion of things they're recycling. When you read all those together, um, you have to be very restrictive if you're going to have a burn ordinance. So, um, I took, uh, the regulations and sort of married, married them to something that would give us the power for local enforcement of, uh, of, of what really is the law in this thing. Um, so this is a, a version of an ordinance day. Um, restricts burning, uh, has some exceptions that would require a permit. Most of those exceptions candidly are not exceptions that a residential property has got to meet month to month. Um, particularly, uh, so everyone's aware, we originally, uh, were going to allow the burning of our yard waste. But I think that the recycling laws require you to recycle yard waste and prohibit burning anything you keep, you can recycle. So that's come out at this point. Um, so it would be a permit per burn. I don't think a lot of the, uh, exceptions where you'd be allowed to burn are going to be met by most of the properties in Bethel. I will say that, um, this does exclude your fire pits, chimneys, grills, the normal household, uh, type activities. But, um, you know, bonfires, things like that, um, you know, w- would be permitted under certain circumstances, uh, very infrequently and with a permit.
And this has been made available online?
So we advertised it for consideration this evening in the Daily Times and, and, uh, we also published it on the website.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance two forty three regulating open burning.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Der Hinesian. Is there any discussion from the board on this?
Uh, my, my read of this ordinance and it's the way I'm reading it, and I think this is the way it's written, seems to suggest that, um, any burning pursuant to section two requires a permit. Um, section two includes people using or burning charcoal or untreated wood for the purpose of cooking food. You know, nobody, including myself, is getting a permit every time they're going to light their grill, nor am I going to be limiting myself to the hours of eight and five in the summertime if I'm going to grill.
So like, if you, if you read further down, that your, your grills are excluded, right? So this would be like a bonfire where you're going to have, uh, maybe a bunch of boy scouts cooking hot dogs at one time for a bonfire.
Where does it say that?
Four, I believe. Out there are fireplaces, cooking grills, patio stove, chimneys factory-built.
Yeah. What does it say the word excluded?
Uh, shall be permitted upon private property solely for their intended purpose. A, I guess, I was reading four dot A.
Well, it doesn't say they're prohibited, but section two says you're allowed to burn food for the purpose of cooking wood. So the fact that they're permitted uses makes sense, but it doesn't mean you don't still have to get a permit the way I read it, nor is subject to the hours of operation. I, I don't, I don't think the ordinance is written well. I think it's overly restrictive. I think it, it tries to kill a fly with a shotgun, and I just think it needs to go back to the drawing board. If the issue or people are concerned about is leaf burning, then let's address it. Uh, I think we've, I think we've overcorrected here.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Davey. Is there comments from the public on this? Yeah. Supervisor Davey, I, I, I'm concerned. I, I guess I would say I share your concern because if, whether you've interpreted it correctly or not, um, and, and I'm sure that you did, but there's a, there's a potential for others to potentially misinterpret.
So maybe just getting that section clarified.
Yeah, yes. I mean, when and I will, I will admit, when I read it and you see exceptions, I'm assuming the, a, it's prohibited with the exception of these exceptions, but then the exceptions are required to have a permit is I guess what you're getting at. And then down further, it kind of says as long as you do it for a intended purpose, but does not to your point, resolve you've, or, you know, resolve your obligation to get a permit for it.
Yes, that's the way I read it, and that's the way I think a court would read it.
Supervisor Davey, would you be amenable to accepting this ordinance if we were to include that language, or are you proposing, uh, redraft?
Well, I think, I don't think you can, I wouldn't suggest or recommend passing an ordinance with an oral motion. I would suggest a redraft and a re-advertising.
Yeah, I mean, certainly if we're going to make changes, we have to re-advertise them.
I would just suggest that let's get the changes made and recirculated and reposted to the public, and if there's any feedback to get them to Madron before the meeting, this way we're not spending additional money on the advertisement every time we're redoing this.
Okay. Um, and, excuse me, is there an
So you need a motion to withdraw the motion.
Right, but I, I have a question. Is there an opportunity to have this potentially adopted in a special meeting or not?
Sure. I mean, I could advertise it for whenever you're going to be in gas. Um, however, if that's what you want to do when I put the purpose of the special meeting in the paper, I need to include this.
Understood. Okay.
Is there, is there some, no pun intended, burning reason why we need to do this in a special meeting?
Yeah.
No, I, I, it was for my own curiosity. I know that some residents are anxiously waiting for this to get passed and, um, you know, I was just trying to be as expeditious as possible. But, um, point made, so then I will make a motion to re- repeal my previous motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second that, I guess, is how that works.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iakono. Any discussion on that from the board or the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will try once again. Thank you, Supervisor Davey. Onto, uh, new business.
All right. Uh, so the next three resolutions are grant applications to the local share grant. As some of you know, we have currently the same three grants pending. Um, and we have not heard, uh, they have not made any decisions yet on awarding the grants. It may not be until next year at this point, so, uh, given that, we're going to reapply for the same three grants. Um, there is no required township match for these grants. So I will just, uh, go down the list here. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two, formally requesting a grant from the twenty twenty five Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Grant for the Goodley Road Culvert Project and designating township officials to execute grant documents for a grant in the amount of five hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And I will second. So motion made by Supervisor Iakono and seconded by myself. Discussion from the board on this? Or from the public? Yes.
Donna Vance, sixteen twelve, Wendy Wayne. I have a couple questions. One is, um, in, in the money going forward, am I to understand correctly that there is no money set aside to do any alterations on the street in case it needs to be done by PennDOT? Is that correct?
Well, Goodley Road's not a PennDOT road. It's a township road, so we take care of it.
So my question is
To, to do this project, you mean? Or just like if there's any specific, if there's a pothole?
PennDOT comes back and says that you have to widen the street, and we have to widen the street for the preserve. Is the money set aside for that is my question.
That's a different project because that's Bethel Road we're talking about, Goodley Road.
Okay. I, I apologize. I jumped the gun.
You did. Um, okay. No, but I can tell you, I can just give you the answer. I can give you the answer now. So, um, PennDOT has decided we don't need to widen the road.
Okay.
Bethel Road.
Okay.
And in general, we have some funds put aside for roadway maintenance. So if there's a pothole that opens up or a pipe that needs to be repaired, there's money in the budget, both in the general fund and in liquid fuels to cover roadway repairs.
So there'll be no altercation, no alterations to that road whatsoever. It's going to stay the way it is to get in and out of there. Is that correct?
Bethel Road, yes.
Okay.
And Goodley Road too. There's no modifications proposed on Goodley Road either.
Next question. How much money have we spent and or committed to spending for this project, including
Still talking about Schaefer, I would imagine.
I am. I apologize. Schaefer, including the purchase of it.
Um, we are working on, I, I've asked the accounting department to put together those numbers.
Two point two million.
That's not accurate.
Yep. You know how I got it? I went back to every single one of the meetings, uh, your minutes, and I took it out of the minutes. Believe me, it took me a long time.
I bet it did, but it's definitely not accurate because we got grant money to cover the purchase, the full purchase price of the property.
I would be happy to give you the report that I have made.
I don't need it.
And you can look on every single solitary one of your minutes that you voted on and starting with the five hundred and fifty-some thousand to purchase it
Yep.
and moving forward from there. And I just, and when I see the minutes and then I don't want to hear, I don't want to read in the minutes that Donna Vance, um, expressed, um, concern about the preserve. I want the facts in there so people can actually read the facts the way I just read them for the last couple of weeks and, um, put them out there. So but I'm not talking about everything you've spent. I'm talking about spent and committed to. So in other words, if you get this grant, you have to have this money. If you get this grant, you have to have that money. So
Sometimes, yes. Sometimes there's no, there's no match required. Like for these, we don't have to put up with shit.
I, I'm talking about the ones that there were. That's all I looked at.
Yeah, no, we, I have asked the accounting department to go through and come up with a total spend on the property and then including like the grants that we've received. So what, what the total township dollars would be?
What I'm trying to tell you is it's in your minutes to your meetings.
But your number's not accurate. I can tell you that.
You are incorrect. Okay, that's fine. And, and I said I can prove that to you with your own minutes from your meetings, starting in January of twenty twenty three.
Well, it goes back to actually twenty eighteen when this project all started.
You're absolutely right. I only went to when the actual project was purchased.
Yeah, there was, there was costs up back to twenty eighteen.
Well, that, that's not even in there. So I didn't even
I wasn't here then, so couldn't, but I know.
I didn't go back that far. I just went back to when you purchased, then the, the purchase was made forward, and that's what it came to.
We're committed to providing that number.
Yep. I'll be happy to give it to you, and you can check my accuracy with your minute meetings, unless your minute meetings are in a
I mean, our accounting department has an accurate representation of our expenditure.
Well, when someone asks you at the meeting, you don't have the answer.
Look, I asked them to compile it for us, so once they get it to me, I will have that number for you.
I believe Follow, just to follow up on that, for when, when did, when did we get notification from PennDOT that there would not be any requirement to alter Bethel Road?
A few weeks ago.
Was that in a letter?
Um, it was in a meeting.
Did they, they haven't given us a highway occupancy permit, though?
No, we haven't applied for one yet.
So that, so we haven't So that, so we haven't been formally told? It hasn't need to be adjusted. We still have to apply for the permit and they have to grant one?
They have told us we need to apply for a minimum use driveway permit.
Okay, and sightline distances included in that?
Yes.
Okay, but again, it was in a, verbally in a meeting, but nothing, nothing's been approved or-
I have to go back. I don't, I don't think they sent out any meeting minutes. I, I'd have to go back. I don't, I don't think so. Sometimes we get meeting minutes and sometimes we don't. So, um, I will go back and look, but um, we will submit a hi, a minimum use driveway permit and then, uh, go from there.
And when, when was the meeting?
It was a few weeks ago.
Okay, like September?
Um-
August?
No, it was, uh, September, I think, yeah.
Then who, who was in the meeting?
Uh, the consultants, Chester Valley, Matt and myself and PennDOT.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Please.
James McDaniel fourteen fifteen Zebby Road East. Uh, the packet that's on the, uh, website tonight, I'm getting lost in the red tape. There's a charge in there for forty-nine thousand dollars for maintenance for a Schaefer property. Is that this month alone? Is it to this year?
Yeah, if, if I can, I, in the financial report?
Yes.
What it, I, I believe it's on the second set of your introduction, Mr. Bars, and it's under the expenditures. Um, and it's item twelve.
Right.
Schaefer Property Maintenance forty-nine thousand five five two thirty-nine. What that represents is we expected at this time this year to have spent forty-nine thousand dollars more than we've actually spent. So we hadn't spent that money at all.
Or forty-nine thousand under budget.
Forty-nine thousand dollars under what we thought the expense was be. And I'm pretty sure that's the entirety of, of that amount, or maybe that minus, uh, some of the-
Couple invoices, maybe.
Couple invoices.
Well, what, what is the maintenance fee when that month? It's not even open.
It's not a fee. Our, our highway department goes and mows the grass.
Well, it's a, for taxpayers, it's a cost money. I call it a fee.
Couple hours, couple hours a week, half a day a week maybe of the highway department during grass cutting season to go out there and mow it. You know, take out the trash.
They don't have to go out regular and empty trashcans and all that?
Trash, yeah, there's trash. They have to trash.
You see, it's about- Got about two hours a week. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, I'm, I'm gonna follow this lady up. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. There was news to me about the road also. Uh, cause when I went to the corn boil, I sat at the picnic table first, don't matter. Guy left out me. Lives local. He only had one foot cavity where, and that was the F-word. My wife told me, leave him alone. Uh, the lady on the other side of the table was trying to get my goat, if you wanna call it that. She was telling me the Schaefer property was free. Uh, the tax, tax, the PennDOT's paying for the road to be straightened. I don't know where she got her information from. But now you're saying it's not gonna cost Bethel taxpayers nothing for that road to be, what it, the way it is?
That road does not have to be widened.
But those-
Or lowered or adjusted.
The bend, the bend don't have to come out or anything? Okay, that's good. That's good.
Maybe we'll have to put our driveway in, but that, that'll be the only improvement on the, along the road.
And we still don't have the reports on the other outfit, right? The, uh-
Oh, no, no.
No. When, when we can get that report? Don't, don't you, shouldn't you have that report before you do anything more with this project?
Yeah, they, they've received a draft copy of the plans, but they haven't provided-
But you're still going forward even though they might not like it, right?
Well, we're waiting for some comments from them. I mean, I'm hope, I'm hopeful we will have comments next month from them.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
But you know, like I said, remember there's a hundred and ten people that haven't paid your township taxes. I, I'm, I always look for the little guy. And I tell you what, that burn, weren't it, it isn't too, it is okay. I know he put a lot of work into it. So he, but you know what? I've never been a union guy in my life. You can thank organized labor. Otherwise, that first piece of trash you tried to pass through probably would've went through if I didn't say something.
I don't recall where we're at.
I made the mo, I made the motion on the grant for Goodley. I don't think that we had a second.
Motion on the table?
Just need a second.
Okay, yeah. Okay, uh, motion made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by Supervisor Der Hinesian. Uh, this is the first item A. Any other discussion from the board? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Same premise, another resolution for the local share grant. I make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, formally requesting a grant from the twenty twenty-five Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Grant for the Schaefer Preserve Final Design and Construction Project and Designating Township Official to Execute Grant Documents for a grant amount of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
And I will second, uh, so motion made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by myself. Any discussion from the board on this one? From the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Opposed, for the record.
Sorry Supervisor Davey for the lag. Thank you. On item C?
Item C, another resolution for the same grant application. I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, formally requesting a grant from the twenty twenty-five Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Grant for the Sharon Storm Basin retrofit project and Designating Township Officials to Execute Grant Documents for a grant amount of three hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by Supervisor Der Hinesian. Any comments from, or questions from the board? From the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to authorize more construction to perform curb repair work at Seven Creek View at a cost not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Der Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Any discussion from the board on this?
Can we just get some context, please?
This was a resident who, who had concerns about the elevations of the sidewalk and the curb and a little bit of a low spot. Um, and because we didn't do the road program last year, it was intended to be in the road program. Um, and then this year, because it was such a small item, Matt thought that the road program contractor, typically they don't do like concrete work. So he, uh, suggested we, uh, get some pricing uh, to get it performed separately and that's what this is for.
Is, is this a claim by the homeowner that there was something deficient when we did the road work?
No, it's an existing road. He's just got like a low spot there. Um, there's been some settling that's occurred, so.
In the curb or the sidewalk?
Both.
How is that our-
It's like, it's like the driveway apron where the driveway apron meets the curb.
Then how is that our responsibility? Driveway aprons are responsibility of the homeowners, aren't they?
The driveway apron is, but the curb is not.
Right, but why are we paying to repair somebody's?
Well, we're, we're doing the curb work.
Curb work only?
That's what Matt's letter says.
Okay, well, I'm asking because Matt's not here.
I know. Well, I'm, I'm pretty certain it's just curb repair.
Well, I would wanna be very certain before we vote on it, so.
His letter has anything else specific?
It's only the first letter.
Yeah. Oh, it's just that?
And I think this was originally supposed to be part of the-
It was supposed to be part of-
Program. Um, which is why I supported. I think we already had the intent-
Yeah, the board committed-
To rectify the situation.
Yeah, the board committed to it last year. Um, and it just, because we didn't do the road program, it didn't get done. So the gentleman has been consistently inquiring.
Any discussion from the, the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize payment to Innovative Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand forty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents for the twenty twenty-five Bethel Township Road Program.
I will second. So motion made by Supervisor Der Hinesian and seconded by myself. Discussion from the board on this?
Was this, was this approved last month? I don't recall this.
We put this out the bid several months ago. Like we typically do every year and, and-
Right, do we open the, I just don't, I just don't remember. Did we open the bids publicly and review them?
Yeah.
Yes.
Were you there for that or no?
Um, I think I opened them because Matt wasn't available.
Yeah, Madron, Madron took care of that. He said Matt wasn't around.
And Matt, and Matt's-
Yeah, we did. And, and now the work is completed.
Okay, this one. Yeah, I have the letter. Thank you. But yeah, the, yeah, I think Matt's recommending as well to, for, for payment after inspection, which has been completed. Um, motion made. Second, any other discussion from the board? From the public on this? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is a motion to authorize an additional forty hours of services for Marco Agostini, already fifty dollars per hour, to provide assistance during the budget season. Um, so Marco has been assisting our accounting department and getting them up to speed during the transition period. Um, and because the budget effort requires input from all the departments as well as all the supervisors, a lot of information to call together and his experience there. Um, he's been used pretty sparingly throughout the year and I think there's an opportunity to have him help us out. Um, and I think there's a letter in the packet saying as such. So I'd, I'd make the motion to approve, excuse me. Motion to authorize an additional forty hours of services for Marco Agostini, at a rate of fifty dollars per hour, to provide assistance during the budget season.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Any discussion from the board? From the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is regarding a special meeting for Schaefer Preserve. So this would be the last of two scheduled meetings, um, to present what I would consider is, uh, permit design documents and get, uh, a last opportunity for public feedback and sentiment. Um, so with that, I'd like to make an authorization to advertise a special meeting presented by Chester Valley Engineers regarding the Schaefer Preserve scheduled for Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty PM.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Discussion from the board on this? From the public? Yes. Eileen, you're first.
Hi, Eileen Meng thirty-two twenty-five Seram Farm Lane. Uh, did you say that this is the last opportunity for a public comment on what's happening at Schaefer?
It's the, yes. The next step is after everything's collated, it would go to for permit.
Permits, yep.
Um, so there's no, there's not gonna be any more opportunity for any kind of input from anybody?
And once the permit drawings get submitted, you can't really change permit drawings without doing additional amendments. So this will be our second, our second public meeting with Chester Valley, and then we had several public meetings with Simone Collins.
So the answer to your question is no, this is it.
Well, that kind, kind of changes things. Um, so, uh, as many of you probably know, I'm running for Bethel Township Board of Supervisors and this Schaefer Preserve, this is why I'm running because uh, the people who live around Schaefer Preserve, whose homes border Schaefer Preserve, um, our interests haven't necessarily been weighed as heavily as we would like. And so the, a big reason why I'm running is because I wanted to have a voice. And I wanted the people who live around Schaefer Preserve to have a voice inside the board and not just be on the receiving end. Um, because I don't want a playground or sports facilities or people walking around and, you know, late at night. Um, I don't want a lot of our tax dollars to go to it. And so by having somebody inside, who's inside the board, who, uh, who's directly affected by what happens at Schaefer Preserve, that's what I was looking for and what I was running for. But if there's no further opportunity at all for any discussion, then I'm, I mean, there's opportunity at that next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the election, you can talk about it all you want. But if you have other, if you're a resident that has concerns like you, then your, your vote in a couple of weeks doesn't really make a difference because there, all those decisions will be made afterwards.
I mean, there's been multiple opportunities for residents to come and give public feedback and residents come every month and give public feedback. So we've had several public meetings with our consultants to go over, with both sets of consultants to go over the project.
Yeah, so this is happening. So this is just part of the, this is just the next step, right? So it doesn't matter. We're, we're, this is, there's gonna be a plan and it's gonna be permitted and it's gonna go through. So last, this is the, the last perfunctory meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
Diane Smith, uh, sixteen oh two Wendy Way. Um, couple of questions. Let me just, um, is preliminary budget going to be available online? Uh, or budgeting, the, the preliminary budget, I know I'm backtracking a little, but is it, you know, since you're not having a meeting before the election, as, uh, uh, Mr. Davies suggested, um, are, is it gonna be online so people can look at it and, you know, form some questions before your meeting on?
Yes.
No, not before the meeting. It doesn't get-
Before the special meeting?
No, it gets advertised after, at the special meeting. That's the point of the special meeting. So it won't be a publicly available document until after the election.
We'll have the, the budget presentation during that meeting and then right after that, it gets published online.
Okay, so then will people be allowed to have input like after that fact? Like if they feel something's too expensive, they can, well, I guess you can always complain about it, but, um, what action can people take?
Well, they can't change their vote, but other than that, they can complain about it.
Complain about, but that doesn't mean you're gonna change your numbers either. Correct?
I mean, there's upper opportunity, there'll be opportunity for comment at the next board meeting after that. If you don't have any comments during the special meeting,
Mm-hmm.
It'll get on the agenda for adoption at the December meeting and there will be opportunity for comments there. If we make material changes during that meeting, then we have to re-advertise and adopt the budget in January.
In the future.
So you have to re-advertise about the budget before-
It's gotta be voted on before the end of the year.
Before the end of your special meeting, so.
That's if you make changes more than twenty-five percent category or ten percent. Or I might have that backwards. It might be twenty-five to one eighty.
So it sounds like it would be very difficult for you to change the budget after the tent or after it's advertised, really. Would be expensive, I guess, and-
Well, it's a, I mean, it's a hundred dollar advertising.
Oh, well. Okay, so we can talk about the budget at the meeting and, and it will be online after the fact.
So if you make those changes, you have to advertise for ten days and then, um, you have to get.
Okay. So now my favorite subject, Schaefer, um, so a couple, uh, notes. I was surprised to hear that PennDOT came back and said they had no changes, which is, I guess is good and everything. Uh, I think they should put that in writing though, so that, you know, because it is a dangerous road. It's a dangerous curve. And I'm frankly surprised they're not gonna put, you know, something, a blinking lights, some warnings, something. Um, so I guess that's my comment on that, on PennDOT. And then, uh, you haven't heard from NALT, but yet you're gonna go full speed ahead with this Chester Valley Engineer Meeting on, um, November twentieth anyway, even though you haven't heard from-
We're hoping to hear from NALT by that meeting.
And what if you don't?
Well, we'll still have the meeting and there's a chance to make any modifications if we, if they have any before we submit for permits.
So we're gonna send it out to permit even though NALT, who has some authority?
No, the intent would be to get public comment, comments from NALT and then submit for permits. Chester Valley was hoping to submit for permits by the end of November, beginning of December.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then I'm confused because, uh, is there gonna be any discussion? Like, is this is phase one? Is there, are they gonna talk about phase two at all in this meeting?
I'm not sure that they've really broken it out into a phase one, phase two plan. I think it's a full phase plan and then that's something that, um, they've, we've scaled down some things. Um, so I think they believe it could all be just constructed as one phase.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And then if we wanna make other improvements in the future, like at the pavilion, that's things we could do in the future.
Um, what about the landscaping?
Lands, there's landscaping included in phase one.
In phase one, but they didn't have it in the first draft that we saw.
Yeah, that was more of a topographical map, just to show the general outline and pathways.
Because NALT, NALT actually has to review the landscaping.
Right. Cause Simone Collins, I mean, you know, he was very, they, they had a very fancy plan and everything, but you had to admit that that was a beautiful plan in that- you had to admit that that was a beautiful plan in that it was, it was pretty. You know, it was a pretty plan. It was too expensive and too fancy and everything, but I liked the trees that they added. And I'm confused why we switched from Simone Collins to Chester Valley. Like, I feel like there was almost a, you know, a bait and switch because Chester Valley's plan was frankly ugly.
Well, it was open bid.
So, hold on, hold on, hold on. So Simone Collins doesn't do civil engineering, design or permitting. They are landscape architect, a planner. So they do schematic design, concept designs. They can't do the stormwater design. So Chester Valley was hired to take their concept and put it through to reality, get the permits, do the stormwater design and everything.
I don't think I ever realized that Simone Collins couldn't finish.
Yeah, and essentially, they, they did take Simone Collins' plan, they scaled it back a little bit and got rid of some, some of the extra features that the public was concerned about, but the trail location alignment is essentially the same. Parking lot's the same. There's not, not a whole lot of, like, significant changes.
Well, um, anyway.
And you'll get that update. They're going to present those plans and the details at that meeting.
Because, I mean, obviously, I'm worried about our board, the border, you know, on Goodley Road and, and you know, things like that. And, and what about the wetlands? I mean, did we talk to the wetland people or?
They have to get a permit to cross the wetlands, yes.
So the next step for protecting the wetlands there is a permit? Not discussing it beforehand or anything like that?
It's going to be presented at the meeting. They are going to show the plans. And then, once they're done with that meeting, they are going to submit permit plans to cross the wetland, to do the stormwater design, to do all the site work.
All right, it just seems like you're skipping some of these people.
No.
If we, if we, we have to have a meeting prior to permit, or else resident input would be severely diminished. Because once it's out for permit, we can't make substantive changes.
Well, I'm talking about is getting, you know, input from people like, like the wetlands experts and things like that, so that, you know, also, in addition to, you know, and the permits like pushed back.
Well, they have folks on staff, they have landscape designers who know how to deal with wetland crossings and wetland plantings and everything like that. So that's all part of the permit, and construction can't start until we have the, all the permits in hand.
Okay, it just seems like all of a sudden you're going full speed ahead. It's, the timing's a little questionable and.
And this has been in the works for.
I know it's been in the works for a long time, but now suddenly it's November and.
It just took us like four or five months to get through PennDOT, because they were ready to submit several months ago, and then the PennDOT kind of put a screeching halt to everything.
Right. All right, uh, all right, I guess that's all my questions. I just had some, you know, comments and concerns. It just seems, I don't know, straight, you know what, every couple of people said that this is what would happen, it would have, start to happen in November and December after the election, and it's exactly what's happening. So, you know, just, I don't know. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Yes.
This is a thing.
He's running for supervisor, he said.
James McDaniel, fourteen fifteens every road east. I'm, I'm still, I heard the word deficit, and I'm still in dazed. When, when did the township go into a deficit?
We have one last year.
It's getting bigger, right?
Well, about the same right now. It's not finalized yet, but give or take a couple hundred thousand.
If you don't stop spending money, the deficit's going to get bigger. Either taxes are going to go up even more. I, I've been, I've I bought my house, my wife and I, forty-eight years ago. I worked a lot of shift work, and I couldn't be here. I don't ever remember hearing the word deficit until you people come along. Is that true? Is that true, Mr. Davies?
Whether you heard it, I don't remember it, but maybe your memory might be better than mine, sir.
I don't remember hearing the word deficit, so these people come on board.
No. If that's your recollection, I can't tell you you're wrong.
Yeah, I mean, you've, you've been around a long time. I don't remember hearing the word deficit when you were in charge. That's all. I gotta say, I think things not looking good in this township.
Any other comments from the public?
Fire.
Yeah, please.
Simon Holschuh, four thousand Penford. First, I just want to call out the person taking the minutes. Thank you for taking the minutes. That's an unappreciated job, and I just want to appreciate you for a moment. Second, there are by my count no less than four men in here wearing suit jackets. And I just want to call out that the thermostat was initially set to seventy-four degrees Fahrenheit. Now, Mr. Davies, he's attending from a remote location. He's not wearing a suit jacket. We have four men in here wearing suit jackets. Seventy-four degrees is unacceptably warm for a room with this many people in it. I think we can all agree. I want to thank the gentleman from the fire department for adjusting the thermostat. I want to thank this gentleman right here for, for requesting that gentleman adjust the thermostat. And I want to kindly suggest that on all such meetings in the future, the thermostat proactively be set to sixty-eight degrees Fahrenheit.
I'm freezing. I don't know if that counts for anything, but.
You know, you're just going to have to trust me that you've only got five people behind this massive desk. Okay, we're all packed shoulder to shoulder over here like sardines. It's a lot of body heat. It's a lot of body heat in a, in a small.
It's all hot air.
You know, it's easy to say that you're not wearing a suit jacket, as I mentioned, and you're also attending from a remote location. For all I know, there's no one else in that room with you.
There isn't.
Yeah, so clearly, you're in a very comfortable environment right now. And I just, I just want to call out, you know, I, I really, I really do appreciate all of the, all of the bureaucratic gears turning and all of the individuals of the public making efficiency their primary concern. And trying to, trying to reduce the, the regular costs incurred by Bethel Township. I do not think saving money on air conditioning costs is such a concern that the thermostat needs to be at seventy-four degrees. I think it can be set at sixty-eight proactively moving forward. Thank you.
Hi, Erica Brunnack, fourteen forty Nauman's Creek Road. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here for their public service. And secondly, I just had a question. A lot about the budget is coming up. I did a quick Google search. It seems like the budget, the preliminary budget meetings are usually in the second half of November, at least as far as I could go back to twenty twenty. So I don't see how this is any different. But I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank the current board for some of the changes that they have made in the past couple of years, specifically for supporting our public safety. I, unlike Mr. Davies, am all for funding the police, and so I'm glad that we are going to give them a new vehicle. Because I would hate to be at the end of a emergency and a vehicle not be able to get to me. I also am very appreciative for the, working with the police and the Garnet Valley Neurodiversity Support Group in equipping the police with the tools needed to help neurodiverse individuals, especially children in emergencies in the township. Very thankful for that partnership. I am also thankful to this board for working on the EMS situation, which I believe Crozier used to lend us there, or we were contracted with their ambulance. As, as all we know, they went out of business and also gave us a a few months or a six-month or a year notice that they would no longer be funding or providing an ambulance, and it was the new board that took on that charge and did competitive bidding and got the new ambulance service parked right here in our township so that service was never interrupted. I appreciate that. I also am happy that the, for the new police that had been brought on board at, I think it was the last two meetings ago, and that we are paying our police and hoping to, and keeping them from turnover. Again, the fiscal responsibility, like the competitive bids for the trash lately. I know there was a little bit of a learning curve, but the trash services, knowing that you have gotten the best deal for that, have been outstanding since that first little transition and the recycling as well. I'm, it looks like you have pursued a lot of grants. At least I read that and heard that from your guys' meeting tonight. And I want to thank you for bringing outside funding into Bethel. Let's see, and I'm also very excited that I was able to attend the tax presentation that was given, that was really transparent and really gave me an understanding of what the tax, taxes are being used for, what the tax is increases were for, and I found that meeting very helpful in that you posted that on the website. Speaking of the website, the website has been looking a lot better than it did in previous years. I also noticed that during some of the storms, I noticed that the Facebook page was updated with alerts about downed trees and outages, traffic outages and road closures. And I think that's an incredibly great new feature that the board has done, also modernizing payment systems for, for taxes, sewer payment bills. And I appreciate the Shaffer Preserve has, it seems that there has been so much willingness to talk with the neighbors. And certainly, I've been, I, I think I was at the first meeting with Simone Collins at the Bethel Springs Elementary School a few years ago or two years ago. And I just want to maintain that this, this, the Shaffer Preserve property was, was agreed to have been bought when? In two thousand eighteen? Is that what I'm hearing?
It started, they started discussions with Dr. Shaffer in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, so two thousand eighteen. Okay, so that was quite a long time ago. So I'm glad that things are moving forward so that the rest of the community can take pleasure in the great outdoors right here in Bethel. And I'm not sure, but I thought I heard something about cameras in the crosswalks. Was that? I don't know if there was a meeting about that. Okay. But I am very interested in possibly going forward with having some talks about providing crosswalks at certain parts of the township. For me specifically, crossing from the Nauman's Creek to Booth's Corner, there's a lot of walkers and bicyclists that I see. I live right near there, and they often, there's, there's a lot of traffic, so that would be something I would like to see going forward. I also really appreciated some of the changes to the township events, like the addition of a band at, at the Corn Boil was really fun, the addition of music at the Fourth of July party, also having the police and fire at the Corn Boil. I was kind of babysanning my neighbor's little boy, and he had a great time getting into the vehicles and learning about the police and the food trucks. I thought that was a great plus for the July, I think it was July fourth event, and also the Corn Boil. So I want to thank you for all that you have done, and I appreciate your hard work.
There any other comments from the public?
Do we want to go back to that motion since we've sort of sidetracked? Yeah, we didn't really get, we're getting public comment before we get through the agenda at this point, so.
No, no, I just meant with respect to the item that was on the table.
All right, so you have a motion and a second.
There's a motion and second for the special meeting for Shaffer Preserve. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Motion carries. The last item under new business is the motion to approve the release of funds for the Snacks of Santa event in amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Darren Essien. This is just releasing the funds to provide snacks and gifts for folks for that particular event. Any discussion from the board on this? Or from the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto announcements.
The Bethel Springs Elementary School HSA will be hosting a trunk or treat event for Bethel Springs students on Friday, October seventeenth, from six P M. to eight P M. As we talked about before, the Parks and Rec Board will be there in costume. Our fire and police will also be there. It should be a good time. And then our other announcement is that in observance of Veterans Day, the Board of Supervisors' November meeting will be held on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Please.
I'm Ed Deisher, eleven oh eight Old Post Circle. Last month, I was inquiring about the budget and the spending for next year. I was hoping that we would be able to see something before the election. I too am a candidate. Joe Platt and I are running for supervisor positions as well. So tonight, for the first time, I guess we heard that there is a preliminary budget that's going to be presented after the election. I don't know how long the budget is. I'm assuming it's, it's pretty luminous for, for the township. I guess my concern is the one point three million dollar deficit. I think the last budget I looked at for Bethel Township was around four million dollars total. Is that about accurate?
I'm not sure if you're talking about revenue or expenses.
Revenue, I'm sorry. Revenue portion.
Generally around two point six million, I think.
Total revenue?
With general fund. I don't have the exact number.
Okay, I, I think the total revenue was maybe around four million, all in. Anyway, I guess my point is if we have approximately a four million dollar pool of money to spend in Bethel Township, and we're going to run a one point three million dollar deficit, that's over thirty percent spending over, over the pool of money that we're going to have. I guess that's my concern. I can't talk to much more about that because I haven't seen the preliminary budget. I don't know how that money's being spent or where it's going.
Yeah, so the process is all the departments put in their requests. So naturally, you're going to have a very large expenditure, and it's our job to refine and reduce that to a practical number.
Right.
So we have just begun that process now of having that budget in the hands of all the supervisors, allowing them to meet directly with the financial department and then identify areas where they see cost savings opportunities.
Okay. You know, to me, Bethel Township is always about the services and the community that we live in, which, I mean, I feel is awesome. It's been awesome for me for the last thirty-two years. Seems to me that the police are getting well-funded, which they should. We've been talking about a lot of other departments tonight. Every month, the fire department gets up and they give their presentation, but I don't hear them asking for anything. It doesn't seem like they're getting very much. I've been in the firehouse, and it seems like it needs a lot of work. I understand their vehicles are close to being out of service, if not out of service already, not out of service, but out of life expectancy.
Our speech right now.
Two thousand.
It's coming up for replacement on air schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a presentation down there. There's a. Yeah, there was a presentation done, there, there's a three apparatus with a twenty-one year kind of lifespan, going from, so, from primary service to backup service. Um, but there was recently an increase in the fire apparatus tax just last year, um, to account for the cost of apparatus.
I've heard that the new trucks don't fit in the firehouse. Is that, is that true, new equipment? No?
They're snug, but, um, we don't purpose setting that we do not need. We're very favorable on a monthly.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that you do, but I think when, when the time comes in near future where you're gonna need a, a new truck.
Yeah, but we, we build it to fit our needs, we don't buy into a short and big, large truck that we, that's a service to the community. Uh, our aerial device is built for Bethel Township. It's, when you put it in the building, it is, you can barely walk between the front and back of that location, it is tight. But that was, when the building was built, of course, we didn't have an other truck.
Right, right.
But in the future, right now, uh, what we're anticipating, the replacement of what we call SWAD, the Rescue Pumper type thing, uh, truck apparatus, I thought, um, will be basically the same size as what we have. The problem being is the, when that truck was purchased, just under four hundred thousand now, it was probably ten million and a half dollars and a four-year sellable, built, of course. If it was purchased now, it would be four years before we purchase.
Right.
I have a question, did, did it say that the roof needed to be raised at the firehouse? You brought that.
That's, that's a voiceless, because we can service the trucks in the building at D P and, and climate element. But the sound of things that could be done in the building, just to keep a sharp little sound. When the door, uh, exterior or work one, face and area and that kind of stuff. It would be nice to have crazy roofs, but that's very costly, we want to withstand foundation, we can deal with working outside and stuff.
Yeah, I haven't seen the budget, so I can't, I'm just, you know, I'm wondering what you guys need, I hear very little about the fire department.
Well, they have a separate budget and a separate meeting that you can attend and, and ask questions about.
Okay, okay.
And then we help them purchase their equipment.
I guess some grant money for that stuff too.
We have to be a cosigner on, on the equipment purchase.
Okay, I mean, my biggest concern is, you know, the deficit in spending and the, the, the amount of the deficit, if that's what it truly ends up to be. You know, we can't sustain that for very long, I mean, if the money's needed, you know, but I, I guess I can't talk to that cause we haven't seen the, the draft budget. So with that meeting, we'll get to see the draft budget and we can comment on it?
Correct.
And things can change up to twenty-five percent?
Yeah, so once we advertise, I think it's twenty-five percent line item in ten in the category, but I might be flip-flopping those and I'll have second class township, but I don't know if either of those off the top.
Yeah, it is, it's, that's your idea.
Yeah, that, twenty-five in a, in a line item in ten in that category, I think. Um, so you advertise it for twenty days, if you make those changes, then you need to advertise for an additional ten days.
So typically, when it's that close to the end of the year, once it's advertised, that's typically the budget that passes.
I mean, typically, that's been a history here, although, um, I work in other towns where it wasn't. You know, where, uh, they've responded to the public comment and re-advertised or made adjustments below those.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe, a lot of, a lot of, Old Post Circle, um, regarding that Schaefer Preserve, I would recommend that you document everything you talk to PennDOT about. Typically, the applicant is responsible for doing meeting minutes within seven days of that meeting. And also, non-residential driveways are typically not medium volume, they're low volume. So that's about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar swing if you get a low volume driveway.
I think. Uh, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, alls in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.